We'd like to call this evening's special meeting of the City Council to order. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis, Councilmember Ali, Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Graeb, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember Montalongo, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Euler, Councilmember Rigenbach, and Councilmember Ruckregel. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Item number 20-045 is a communication from the City Manager with a presentation from Fitch and Associates concerning the Fire and Dispatch Service Study, and there are several handouts on your desk.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What you have in front of you is two presentations as well as in the packet. You had the two summary, or the two summary, or two reports, excuse me, from the two phases of the Fitch study. What I'd like to do is first kind of just provide some highlight and background information for you at a high-level overview before we turn the floor over to Bruce Muller and Guillermo Fuentes from Fitch and Associates. Fundamentally, the engagement that we had with Fitch and Associates attempted to answer two specific questions. Number one, are the right resources going to the right calls? And number two, are the resources that are sent appropriate? What we tried to do was review not only dispatch with regard to how well dispatch was performing. Are there ways that the city could optimize the use of the Medical Priority Dispatch System? To also then, in the second phase, do a comprehensive staffing analysis and best-practice review of the Emergency Communications Center. But then also, what role should Fire have in EMS? How efficient and effective is it? Are the resources being deployed effectively? And what's AMT's service role? And what are those response times metrics assigned to transport? And how does the system of first response mesh ultimately with the transport role of AMT? And then we did a best-practice review there as well. This was not about closing fire stations. While there was some discussion about deployment, this was about those two questions at the top of that page. Are the right resources going to the right calls? And are the resources that are sent appropriate? The first phase was completed in May of 2019. The second phase was completed later in the fall of 2019. In addition, our staff has been working both in the Fire and in the ECC on a number of different areas to help to improve system performance. That included the automated dispatch system, which allowed us to automate some of the dispatch of fire calls, moving away from the paper tickets that we used to have, as well as the traffic signal preemption. We have another $100,000 budgeted this year for traffic signal preemption. Quickly, and because I'm not going to try and share Bruce's presentation, but quickly, I think in summary, on the Fire and EMS system findings, they said that we had strong response times, especially when it comes to travel. AMT was responding about a minute forty-six seconds behind the Fire Department, and that we had system, significant system capacity. Fitch had made an, advised that three machines could be removed from service. And during the budget discussions and deliberations for the FY 2019 budget, we did remove Rescue One and Rescue Two from service. The EMS results, both Fire, the Project Medical Director, and AMT all worked to review over 1,300-plus different EMS types of calls to look at what would be the resource that should be arriving on those calls first. The recommendation was that we should be using the Medical Priority Dispatch System in the Emergency Communications Center, and that philosophically, lower severity calls should go to AMT, and that Fire should be responding for higher priority incidents. We should be looking at introducing BLS transport units through AMT, and then shifting out the performance target from eight minutes and fifty-nine seconds for AMT to arrive on scene to ten minutes and fifty-nine seconds. And all of that is really contingent upon some staffing upgrades within the Dispatch Center. On the workflow side, within the ECC, they made some recommendations. First, conduct EMS call intake by certified personnel using the EMDS software. We've had paper versions of that medical dispatch program. This is actually using the software for that instead that comes along with it. Migrating away from that paper version to the software version, and then also to try and consolidate as many of our talk groups in the Dispatch Center as we possibly could. This past year, as part of the budget process, the Peoria County ETSB funded the EMDS software purchase for the Emergency Communications Center. From a staffing perspective, the increased intake performance could be improved if we were to add one more seat in the Dispatch Center on a 24-hour-per-day basis. So in structuring that, and Mr. Muller will go into that here in just a second, is that we would be looking at the need to increase the staffing in the ECC by five positions. We're currently down seven, so it would be moving at a higher level. But by doing that, we would be able to have the resources necessary to effectively dispatch the calls that need to go out from the EMS standpoint. Currently, we know that we have that shortfall that exists in the ECC. We've been doing a number of things. We've increased actually the pay for our dispatchers. We're looking at referral bonuses. We're looking at trying to increase the number of ways that we can recruit dispatchers. And we're not alone in this. I was having a conversation with Bruce and Guillermo from Fitch earlier, and I asked them, you know, how many other communities are facing this? And Bruce said, every community across the country is facing this challenge of trying to fill dispatchers. So we're not alone on that front. So what have we recommend, or what recommendations have been implemented? Rescue One and Rescue Two were removed, and we've purchased the EMDS software. What's pending? The additional staffing in Dispatch. The introduction of BLS transport in the ambulances. The shift of the transport performance target. And then the implementation of the revised EMS response protocols. Now, what does the revised EMS, what are the benefits of those revised EMS protocols? Here's what it points to, and what Fitch will point to and will talk about here in just a second, is that if we are able to staff the Dispatch Center, we should be able to see a 15% reduction in lower-acuity EMS calls, lower severity EMS calls responded to by the Fire Department. And then by doing that, and then with that change, that's going to then allow, on the higher priority incidents, it will allow our firefighters to utilize their ALS skills in order to focus on those high-priority calls, which is one of the points that was made when we had Dr. Jackson here, and he was talking about that, the challenge that we've had with some of our skills degradation of our firefighters because they're not able to perform on some of the advanced life support services. So this is one way that we can, we can look at trying to address that. So with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Bruce Muller and Guillermo Fuentes from Fitch. And they're going to, I'm going to switch the PowerPoint slides, and we'll let Bruce take it over from here.
Members of the council, good evening. My name is Bruce Muller with Fitch and Associates. Mayor, is it okay if I work well here?
Absolutely.
That's all right. I just have a hard time getting tied behind a lectern or a podium. As I said, my name is Bruce Muller. I'm a senior consultant with Fitch and Associates. It's a pleasure to come back. For those of you that will recall, I was here last year, had an opportunity to address you with one of our other partners in the firm to talk about the first half of the study. So I'll briefly go into that. But with me this evening is Mr. Guillermo Fuentes. He is a partner and chief operating officer for the firm. Dr. Stephen Knight, who was with me last time, wasn't able to make this trip, but he was involved in the project, particularly on the work that we did on the Fire Department, looking at the operations, the efficiency, et cetera, with that. Then myself, obviously. And we also had, as our statistician on this, Dr. Erwin Stroudowski, graduated from MIT, and he did all of the modeling, and I will go over some of that. Recognizing that some of what we did last year may not have been seen by the public. I recognize this, or the manager indicated this is being streamed. So I'll kind of briefly go over that again to put the entire project and our engagement in process, and then I'll be happy to answer questions for you at the end, or in the meantime, you know, during it, if you would prefer. As we indicated, there were really kind of two phases. The first phase, we looked at Fire and EMS and the operations within them, answering the questions that the manager alluded to. During that discussion, during that evaluation, we came to an understanding that there was an opportunity to improve service or to keep services exactly the same by making some adjustments within the system. And that adjustment that would be made would happen in the 911 center, but that required some additional work. So the city asked us to do that. Tonight, I will go over that information as well and explain kind of the recommendations that came out of this. The manager has indicated what those were. But I'm going to talk about how we got there, what the logic, what was the data, et cetera, that went into that. So let me talk about our process, because this is important for the firm. We're a very data-driven firm. The numbers, the analytics are important. But for anybody that does that a lot, what you recognize is that there's only so much you can get from looking constantly at a spreadsheet. So in addition to the quantitative component of the modeling that we do and the statistical analysis, there's also the qualitative piece. What are stakeholders telling us? We met with most of the council members. We met with the mayor. We met with the Fire Department. We met with the command staff. We met with members of the labor organization. And you can see on and on, the 911 center, even the Police Department during this engagement on the 911 center, healthcare providers, et cetera. Because what's really interesting, what really makes the biggest difference for us, and where we like to focus our attention, is when the data points out to us issues, either very positive or that are challenges in the system. And qualitatively, people are telling us there are concerns for them as well. And when we see those two elements cross or intersect, then we know that's something we really do need to address. And when we're done with those two components, we have a pretty clear picture of what's going on in the system, both from a data-driven perspective and from what's important and what we're being told by the stakeholders. And then we define policy alternatives. And I'll go over what those were within this particular engagement. So with regard to the first half, looking at Fire and EMS, how the system's performing, were you sending the right resource to the calls, et cetera? And let me talk again briefly about the data. For those that are in the community and the public that may be listening to this, I'll go over this. Some of you may recall these slides from before. We captured five years of data from your computer-rated dispatch system in 911. We also, by the way, captured data as well from your ambulance provider, AMT. And we consolidated that into a single data set. So we took from two different sources, built a single view of what was happening in the system. What we've mostly focused on in the, some of the slides I'll show you in a moment, focused on the most recent year. The reason we look at five years is we're looking for trends in the system. Is call volume going up? Is it going down? Is there a change in the type of incidents upon which you're being asked to respond to, to which the Fire Department or AMT is being required to handle? Then, so it's that last year. And the other thing I want to talk about briefly, because this is an important discussion in design and evaluation of systems, and it has to do with measuring the average of performance versus the 90th percentile. I promise I'll try not to make this a math lesson. And it's important for the council, or for the council to understand this. This is a difficult concept, so generally what I recommend is that in public discussion, we normally talk about the average. How quick does the Fire Department respond in X minutes? How quick does something happen in X minutes? How long does it take for this or that? And we generally talk the average. But if we all recall kind of the standard deviation, the graphic on the top right there, the bell curve, if we're talking about average performance, and if you set a target or objective to meet that performance fit at, on the average, you're really saying you're going to fail 50% of the time. Because by definition, with a normal distribution of activity, half the time you're going to make the number, half the time you aren't. But we use it because it's easy to understand. People in the public understand it. But with regard to Fire, with regard to EMS, and with regard to 911, within the industry, we use the 90th percentile. In other words, we want to ensure that the public has a level of performance so that 90 times out of 100, you're going to make the mark. That's why we do it. That's why we evaluate that way. Now, I will tell you, I will offer some advice to the council. Don't share that discussion too, not a secret, but I mean, that's a tough number to put out, because you'll see in a moment, when you talk the 90th versus the average, the performance is the same, but the numbers look dramatically different. It's just a difficult concept for the public. But I think for those running the department, they clearly understand it. Both ECC, the Fire Department, AMT, and for the council, the policymakers, the manager's office to understand, that's how you really look and evaluate your systems. So I'll be talking about the 90th percentile. 90 times out of 100, will you, what number are you making? So let's talk about the current system as we saw it with the data that we were looking at. And we did look at two things. We look at the number of incidents that occur in the system. That is a call, for lack of a better term, maybe one 911 call, upon which somebody called, said there's an emergency. And then the number of vehicles that you send to that call, which is a different answer, right? For example, many times in a structure fire, the Fire Department has to send multiple units in order to address that emergency. Vehicle accidents, police goes, Fire goes, EMS goes. The same thing happens on a lot of EMS calls in the system, that both the Fire Department goes and AMT goes. And that's one of the things we'll come back to in a moment. But overall, there were 27,000 incidents in the one year that we are mostly focusing on here. And this is a graphical representation, not surprising. Like many communities across the nation, 85% of the activity is related to EMS. Now, I will pause for a moment and point out that in the last three decades, that number's changed dramatically. Prefer not to admit how long I've done this work, but back when I did, actually, I started in Illinois. Started as a short time for a police officer, then a firefighter paramedic. Today, your agency, your Fire Department, 85% of their activity is related to EMS. 85%. In the last three decades, the number of structure fires in this nation have been cut in half on a national basis. The number of deaths from fire, cut in half. The number of injuries from fire essentially cut in half. And yet, the demand on the fire service for EMS has grown 300%. 300% in that same timeframe. So the way that Fire Departments respond and deploy and react needs to change because the demands of the community have changed. It wasn't that way, quite frankly, when I was doing it. There was a smaller number of EMS calls. But community expectations in every community have changed dramatically. And that's one of the reasons why it was timely for the city to undertake this evaluation. Because you are grappling with some of the same, very same issues that are occurring across the nation. The other thing that sometimes people don't appreciate is the temporal distribution of when calls occur. This visual on the screen, this graph, shows the 24 hours of the day, starting at midnight and going through 11:00 PM of that same day. And what you'll notice is there's a significant difference. The number of calls that occur at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning are significantly less than those that occur at 4:00 or 5:00 in the evening. And in fact, the relationship is generally two to three times greater in the daytime. So when you evaluate systems, you look to do this so that there's a certain coverage you have geographic that you need for 24 hours a day. But then you also have to consider, do we need additional resources? Or what resources do we need for the daytime when it's exceptionally busy? And you've got to cover both of those, both from a geographic perspective and also from a demand perspective. So to do that, we look at where the calls occur, where they're at in relation to the resources, the fire stations in this case. And these are from the first report to what we call heat maps. They show us where the calls are occurring. The blue are the lower call volumes, the yellow, and then red show the hot spot. So it's a heat map shows where the activity occurs. The one on the left is related to fire activity. The one on the right is related to medical activity. Not surprising in any community. It's interesting when we do this for fire chiefs and firefighters. They'll look at it and go, yeah, I know why that's red. There's a nursing home there. There's a senior citizen community there. There's a hospital in that region, whatever it may be. There's reasons generally understood by the men and women on the street that provide the service day in, day out. But again, we need to validate that. We need to understand if something stands out, jumps out. So let me talk about performance in the system, how the system was performing when we looked at it. And here, we come back to that conversation about average and 90th percentile. And we take the time it takes to get to a call, and we break it into components. Because we look at each of those individually to understand where the great performance is occurring and where the challenges occur, where's an opportunity to improve. So we look at the time from the dispatch interval, which has to do, when somebody picks up the phone and dials 911, when the phone rings in the 911 center until the time that Dispatch Center sends resources to the call, alerts somebody to go, that's the dispatch interval. How long does it take to notify the crews? The second element interval is the turnout time. From the time the tones go off in the fire station, and they know they have an incident they have to respond to, until the wheels are actually rolling down the street. And then the travel time is the actual drive time. And then we have the total response interval there. On average, you can see the numbers, minute 45 for in the 911 center, a minute and a half, almost a minute and a half, minute 24 to get out the door, and then 2 minutes and 35 seconds, with an overall time of six minutes. Several of those numbers are quite good. I'll tell you, the travel interval in this community, the manager alluded to this, was honestly quite extraordinary, quite, quite good. At the 90th percentile, though, you see the numbers are different, right? This is the same performance. It's not different performance, it's just a different way of calculating it. 3 minutes and 2 seconds for dispatch, 2 minutes to get out the door, 4 and 1/2 minutes travel time, 8 minutes and 53 seconds overall. So that's what the system was performing with regard to the Fire Department. But we don't just look at how fast it is, but we look at how much work they're taking on. And is there too much work to do? So we do a calculation referred to in the industry as a unit hour utilization. And it looks at from the time a unit is dispatched to a call until that same unit becomes available for the next call. And we calculate that total time, and we calculate it as a percentage. You can see that the busiest unit you had in this data set was Engine 13, little under 10%, and then you can see the other units going down. Now, I need to point a couple of things out about this because oftentimes, business owners often will look at this and kind of wonder what's going on here, and the public will. First off, there's a red line or an orangish line up near the top at 30.3%. And that is the upper limit that a unit should be tied up on actual activity, on actual calls. That number actually comes from the International Association of Firefighters. It was in the first edition of their guidebook for fire-based EMS. So they said it shouldn't be higher than that. Now, again, as I said, this only involves the time you're actually on a call. But there are all sorts of other activities that the men and women have to do. When they come in in the morning, they have to check out their equipment. They have to sit there and do training. They have to restock the ambulance after a call, even they're available. They have to do reports, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So one reason you don't want that number too high is because there's all sorts of other associated activities that they are busy doing, but not necessarily captured in this number. The second element I need to point out. If this number gets too high, business people, when I've done this with business people, they'll go, we're paying for this, I expect it to be 70, 80% of the time. Here's the problem with that logic. If they're busy on other calls 70, 80% of the time, what's going to happen when you need them? There has to be a certain amount of availability within the system. If not, you have to add more resources. There has to be some confidence that when I need to call 911, there is a vehicle available to respond. So there's a balance of this. But what this shows us in your system is there is capacity in the system. You're not quite at that mark yet where we get concerned. And we also looked at the performance of the Fire Department and their arrival on scene versus that of AMT. As you can see on this graphic, to the left are the number of calls and the time difference of how quickly AMT got there before the Fire Department. And of course, on the right is the Fire Department arriving before AMT. Overall, on average, AMT was arriving 1 minute and 46 seconds after the Fire Department. I'm going to spend a little time on this. But all of this data together told us a couple of things. One, the system really was, is, not was, is performing quite well. It provides a good level of service to the community. Your response times are strong, especially the travel times. But when you both send an ambulance from AMT and a Fire Department vehicle, and they arrive together or almost together, a minute 46 apart, what you're doing is sending two resources to a large number of calls that don't need two vehicles to go. And that's a problem in the system. It shows that there's significant capacity in the system. Well, what's the answer? What do you do about that? What is that, how do you interpret that? What's the, what's the best practice in the industry on how to address that? So as we were finishing up that portion of the report, we came to a couple of different conclusions. And what we did in October of 18, when we were here, we met with many of you individually. And we talked about, and I'm going to say it this way because I think it's important. We talked about, for lack of a better term, the extremes. What are the extreme positions for the City Council to consider? Over here on one end is status quo, leave things as they are. System's generally performing quite well. You know, you've got lots of capacity, response times are good, right? If you were not fiscally constrained, if money was not an issue, leave it. You're good. Over here, on the other extreme... Over here, on the other extreme, was, well, what if you want to make an adjustment? How far could you go understanding the way fire is delivered in this nation, best practices, industry expectations, et cetera? And we did a number of different models. And what we said this far extreme over here could be, you could, if you wanted to make an adjustment to some of your travel times and make adjustments elsewhere in the system, I'll come back to that. You could have a reduction of up to six units, six machines in the system. That was not a recommendation, I need to be clear on that. It was a bookend. Over here, status quo, over here, six. But we recognized, as in most communities, that's pretty extreme difference. So there was a center point that we spent some time looking at. And it was looking at what if there was an adjustment of just three machines out of the system? That the council no longer funded those. And from the citizen's perspective, that would have some impact on response time. But there's ways to adjust it somewhere else that the citizen's perspective would be almost exactly the same. Let me explain that for just a moment. We looked at your system. Now this is not modeling, this is actual data. And the top graphic is probably the most informative. We looked at the system every time a call came in. We said, how many other units are already tied up on a call? What we wanted to do is see if we took one unit out of the system, how much time changes with regard to response time. The graphic on top, those black dots show you the average response time. Obviously, the boundaries of each of those shows one standard deviation. But the lower left of this slide says, in the current system, if you took one unit out of the system, you changed the average response time by eight seconds. Actual data, not modeling, actual data. We looked at this system and said, well, what happened when a call came in and two vehicles were already tied up? What happened then? It changed it by 16 seconds. Three units was 42, et cetera. So when we looked at that, that again, along with a number of other metrics we employed, said there's a fair amount of capacity in the system. And if there is a policy decision to make an adjustment, you could do it and two or three units would not have a significant impact on the system. But it would have an impact, it would. So how do you address that impact? I'll come back to that in just a moment. Because we don't look just at average response time for the first unit, but as the fire chief will tell you, firefighters will tell you, you also have to have something in the industry known as an effective response force. It takes more than one fire engine to handle a structure fire. It takes multiple. In the industry, we call that an effective response force. We want to know how long does it take to assemble a crew of 15, 16, 17 personnel? So we looked at that in the system under the current deployment, what the CAD data showed us, what your systems were actually performing at. And then we also looked at it based under a couple of alternatives. The one alternative did look at, because it was just one of the many alternatives that we evaluated, was closing some stations. The second option was to reduce the inventory within this fleet, the staffing of two vehicles. So I'm going to point to the 8-minute and the 10-minute time there. So the current ERF, how the system was performing, and then what would it look like? And let's focus on option two because that's ultimately what the council did, was option two. How long does it take you to get that effective response force as a percentage of time? So at 8 minutes under the current, it was 31.95. Under option two, it went down 3, 3 and 1/2%. At the 10-minute mark, the difference is less than 1% of the time difference. These numbers reflect, and then it goes on from there at 12 and 10. It says that making those changes between the current and option two, which is the reduction of two apparatus, does not significantly, statistically significantly change the performance on effective response force. So I want to go back to the citizen's perspective for a moment. Because as I said, one of the things we identified in the system was that the time it takes 911 to process calls was longer than what we see in typical systems. It's longer than the recommendations. It's longer than what we, in our professional judgment, doing these all over the nation would prefer to see. But here's the interesting thing. You perform really well here on travel time, but in dispatch, underperform a little bit. But if you want to make an adjustment here, right? And take, you know, just make an adjustment here from a fiscal perspective. If you can improve over here, the citizen's perspective remains exactly the same. And so what we suggested was there's an opportunity to improve call processing within the dispatch center by approximately a minute in our estimation. But it would take that additional work. And so that's what we presented to the city. They asked us to do that, and we did. Part of the work in the initial engagement, though, had to do with medical response system. Because the question was, are you sending the right resource to the right call? Let me talk about that for a few minutes. So first off, there was a group. You can see the individuals that were involved. Again, engagement's important. Mr. Fuentes is the one that facilitated that process. Number of meetings, documents going back and forth. It included your medical director, the chief, the time, well, it says assistant chief, sorry, it's chief, artist, the time chief, individuals represented from AMT, and then the 911 system. And they looked at the system. So it has to do with this priority dispatch, this medical priority dispatch system that's used in your system. But here's the interesting thing. Along with everything else that's changed in the last 30 years, the medical literature has changed. Most people don't appreciate this. But for the research is clear today that in the majority of medical calls, response time is not as important as we once believed it was. If I, for some reason, get clumsy walking around up here and I hit this podium and fall, if I do not strike my head, if I do not become unconscious, if I hurt my hip, my leg, if I get a response time in two minutes, if I don't get assistance for 12 minutes, if I don't get anybody to show up for 20 minutes, it will not make a single difference in the medical outcome for me. You may have somebody who's unhappy, but medically, it doesn't make a difference. And in fact, we know more and more that many calls, not all, but many call types are lower priority. Demand has gone up, community expectations have changed. And we know that in that range between 5 and 12 minutes, it doesn't make as big of a difference as we used to believe. But we do know that in certain calls, it does make a difference. It makes a huge difference. And so the challenge in EMS design is to identify those calls early in the process, which is why 911 becomes so important, and identify the high priority calls versus the calls that are less acute, less critical. And then to send the right resource to the right call. That's really what the objective is. That's how EMS system design occurs today. And again, the literature goes, well, here's what the literature says generally. ALS is paramedic-level service. ALS is the things that a lot of people equate with ambulances. It's the paramedics, starting IVs, shocking the heart, starting the IV, giving the drugs. And that's been shown to have greater value in non-traumatic cardiac arrest, non-traumatic, a coronary, a heart attack. Interestingly, the literature, the second bullet point there, trauma victims, penetrating trauma, benefit from rapid transport. Don't do all the advanced procedures, stay on scene, do it. Move quickly to the hospital. That's what the literature tells us now. So what we've understood now is what becomes important is to have a much more granular approach to understanding what's happening and to manage that call differently. And your system wasn't taking full advantage of that. You have many of the pieces, but it wasn't full advantage. You already employ, your ECC, your 911 center already employs something called MPDS, Medical Priority Dispatch System. But it wasn't being fully utilized because the granularity that it can give you didn't really change how you responded. So the revisions that we recommended, what Mr. Fuentes, the chief, your medical director, and others engaged in, was going from 121 different dispatch codes to taking 1,326 different MPDS codes and categorize those into one of 14 different ways to respond. Sending the right resource to the right call. So I'm going to explain MPDS just very briefly here because there's a misunderstanding of this often and I think it's important. Dr. Jeff Clausen, by the way, your staff needs to be commended. You were one of the first adopters of this program, MPDS. Dr. Jeff Clausen did this from Salt Lake City. Mr. Fuentes, how long ago? 30 years ago. 30 years keeps coming back, doesn't it? 30 years ago, when your city adopted that, you know who came out here and helped teach everybody? Looking at David Tuttle there? Dr. Clausen himself came out here. You would never get Dr. Clausen out today. But the way the system goes is we categorized calls based in, it was at one time, one of four categories, A, B, C, D. We call it Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta. Then we realized that the most acute calls, a subset of very, very bad calls, and we called those E or echoes. And then in the latest revisions now, we refer to something as Omega, which really, in some very large systems, they don't even send a medical unit. They have a nurse practitioner on the line. Maybe they get them a Uber to the clinic or something. So there's all sorts of categories. But here's the thing to understand. The A and B that you see on the left both indicate that that call, that incident, can be handled not by paramedics, but it can be handled by emergency medical technicians. Those that are trained, but don't have the ability to start all the IVs, give all the drugs, defibrillate the heart, right? It's slightly lower level of care. The A calls, you don't have to respond lights and siren. The A calls, you can go what we call cold. You can just get in the vehicle and drive there because there's a risk. It's a risk management thing if you drive lights and siren. Bravo calls still only need emergency medical technicians, the first level. But you need to respond lights and siren. And the C or Charlie calls, and the Delta calls, and the echoes are all paramedic-level calls. The C calls, you can go no lights and siren. The Deltas and echoes. That's the way the system is designed. So when you understand that, we went through the list. So here are those types, the complaint severity in far left. Omega is the lowest, Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, Echo. That's the number of calls you had in a year that were classified. In calendar year 17, you can see the numbers and the percentage for each. What Mr., what the team did that went through the revisions is they said, what's really necessary? Let's talk about the right resource to the right call. I want you to take just a moment, if you would, and look at, for example, Alpha calls, As. The fire department responded to 2,780 of those. Those are low acuity, low priority calls. Don't have to go lights and siren. Technically, don't even need paramedics. Going through the different subcomponents of Alpha calls, they said, the group, your medical director included, said you only really need to send the fire department to about 450 of those. You can not send them to some of the calls. You'll notice that on Bravo calls, surprisingly, because we use lights and siren on Bravo calls, that number went up a little bit. It went up by 12%, almost 13%, and on and on. Here's what you're doing with this revision. You're keeping, for lack of a better term, in reserve. You're hanging on to your most valuable resource, your paramedics on fire apparatus deployed throughout the community. And you keep them in service so that when you get the high priority call, they are available and can respond. And for calls where the clumsy consultant trips, falls, and does nothing but hurts his hip, but is conscious, is breathing, nothing else, you can send the ambulance, AMT by themselves. Let them grab the person, take them to the hospital as necessary. The right resource to the right call. You're avoiding not sending two vehicles to low priority calls. And you hang on to your most important resource, the fire department. Your fire paramedics to go to the high priority calls. That's really what this does. That's really what we recommend. So again, as I said, as the manager alluded to, the right resource to the right call. The fire department doesn't go to the lowest priority calls because it's not necessary. They trip over each other. They're a minute 46 apart from each other. Honestly, if I trip and fall, I don't need four, five, six, eight people here to help me. I may lie, medically not necessary. So what we suggested doing is analyzing the 911 system, helping, looking at staffing requirements, what changes needed to be made there, et cetera. So let me talk about that for a few minutes, if I could. So in the 911 study, we use some pretty advanced modeling on this. We've done this all over the nation. We've done this for a system, our South Florida friends, 1.5 million calls, 1.5 million calls, Consolidated Dispatch Center, huge metro area. I just finished working in a county, helping the 911 system of a county with a population of 1.5 million. And we've applied these same techniques here. And we're still doing studies all over the nation. But what they do is something a little bit different, something unique. They use the existing CAD data, the computerated dispatch data, what's happened historically. And we add to that radio data, and we also add to that 911 data. And we analyze every channel, every radio channel, and every position in there. Both people that answer the phones and people on the radios, fire and police, every channel. And we do it for every single hour of the day. And we calculate a statistical value called an airline. For those of you that may have trouble sleeping tonight, if you like, within the report, there is an appendix dealing with the Danish mathematician, Erlang, who came up with this. Really, it was, it came up in the early 1900s. It had to do with telephone. Today, what you need to understand about airline calculations, they're well accepted, understood. It's used by the telephone company. It's used by Starbucks to figure out how many people I need working in order to get people through the line so quickly. It's used by TSA. Interesting story, right? You go stand in line for TSA to clear the airport. You stand 5, 10 minutes, you're upset. Then you go stand in Starbucks line for 20 minutes. But they both use the same tool in order to tell you how long it takes. It's used in computer systems It's used in computer systems to know the bandwidth and the number of data packets that can flow across. And we used it here to look at how many people you need on radios and how many people you need on the telephone in order to handle the demand of traffic. The first step was we took the CAD data and we exported it into proprietary file. This is one call, this record here just shows you one example of one call that occurred. It shows when the call came in, how quickly it got answered, when the unit was dispatched, when they got on scene, when they cleared, all the units that were assigned, all the metrics associated with it. How many units of multiple units were assigned? We capture all of that. We then sit there and look at the radio records and we look at the same thing. Radio records are interesting because every radio channel, we use the term channel, but it's really called a talk group. We look at conversations. So Mr. Fuentes and I are going to have a conversation back a million, not for real, just, a million years ago, I used to be called Chief Ten, that was my designator. If I called one of my engines, Engine 43, I'd say, Chief Ten to Engine 43, can you give me an update on what's happening there? That's one push to talk, something called a push to talk. I key my radio, I ask that question. Engine 43 comes back, goes, Engine 43 to Chief Ten, we're on scene of a structure fire, we've got light smoke showing, buildings evacuated, whatever, right? That back and forth is one conversation. It's two push to talks, one conversation. That's important to know because we're quantifying how much radio traffic one channel can handle and how much radio traffic one radio operator can handle. And we do these calculations, by the time we're done, it took over 98,000 calculations, looking at all the different permutations, every radio channel by hour of day, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's the math modeling that goes into this. And here is an example of Model N, as in Nora. And this is for a set of radio channels, positions one, two, and three in the dispatch center, by hour of day, the number of push to talks, the number of airlines, how many people are necessary to get performance at a certain level. And one thing I want to point out is the very top right-hand corner. Because in doing this modeling, one may mistakenly think that we only look at the average radio traffic, the average demand on the system. But if you talk to any police officer, any firefighter, any paramedic on the street, they'll tell you not every day, not every hour is average. So we, what did I say, we evaluate systems at? We design and evaluate systems at the 90th percentile, right? So in the top right-hand corner, you'll see something that says surge 1.28. Mathematically, we surged this system for every hour of the day, we assumed the system was exceptionally busy, every hour of the day. Now, by the way, that doesn't happen. What happens is one hour, maybe two hours are busy, thunderstorm comes through, right? Flooding, whatever, so you have short bursts. But we look at this by surging the system, assuming it's going to get exceptionally busy, because you want to ensure to the highest degree possible the service levels will be met. And once we've done all that modeling, then we apply the operational standards. So it's easy. For somebody answering telephones, based on state statutes, state regulation, based on national standards, national recommendations, we said, you want the phone answered within 10 seconds, 90% of the time. Okay? That basically means, by the way, 10 seconds is three rings, three times the phone rings. Each ring is about three seconds. The second criteria is for any single hour, you want it less than 15 seconds, 95 times out of 100. That's for somebody talking on the phone. For somebody on the radio, we do not want that person to exceed .4 airlines. In other words, 40% of the time with radio traffic. Because that radio operator doesn't just listen to the traffic, but they have to follow up when a police officer calls and tells them to do something, or a fire engine or, you know, whatever, calls and says, we need you to do something. They have to make a follow-up phone call, they have to make a notification, they have to enter the notes into the CAD, whatever it may be. So we applied these standards to that, and here's the recommendations we came away with within your 911 center. The first is that you continue to use the medical priority dispatch system, but that you certify your people. And there is a certification process. It is a quality assurance piece. You want them certified, they have to have a certain amount of training, and you also want to ultimately achieve credentialing for the center so that there's a quality assurance component to make sure they're following the system the way it should be. And that you do this using the computerized version of the software. You actually use the cards today. But by buying the software, it integrates into the computerated dispatch system, it makes the process go faster, and it helps ease the input into the computer system to select the right unit, okay? So you go away from the paper system to the software. The manager indicated, the funding's been approved? If I heard correctly, okay, so the funding's been approved for that through the 911 board. This is an example of the call, one call type. This is a fall, it's Card 17, Chief Complaint 17. Remember I said there's Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, Echo? Well, for a fall, there's only Alphas, Bravos, and Deltas, right? So if the call comes in as a 17 Alpha, that would be a call you arguably could give to the ambulance company. But if it's a 17 Delta, no, you've got to send your people lights and sirens. There's even, underneath those, there's even numbers after that. It's actually a 17 Delta 3, if I fell, tripped, hit my head, and was unconscious, that'd be a, literally in the CAD, it would say 17 D 3. I'm somebody who tripped and fell and I'm unconscious, or I fell a long distance, or, or, or. And this information also helps improve situational awareness of the emergency responders because they can get that information since it's done electronically in the vehicle as they're responding to the call. Again, you classify it into one of 37 call types, the chief complaint, then you categorize it as either the lowest priority, Alpha, or the highest priority, Echo. You further delineate underneath that into subdeterminants, 1,326 different types, and from that were divined or derived 14 different ways to respond, each tied to the right resource to the right call. The second thing we identified had to do with radio talk groups. We saw an opportunity to help by saying consolidate radio channels. Since we had those preliminary discussions with staff last year, you've already done some of that. You haven't done all of it, but you've done some of it already. And that continues to be, I think, something that can be worked on. Because the channels are not so busy, it can help free up capacity to help answer phones. The way your system works now, part of this has to do with staffing quite widely, and I think I said, for the manager, he said I alluded to, how many people have trouble staffing 911 centers? It's literally everybody. I said, if you find a 911 center that doesn't have a problem, it is a unicorn. It's just across the nation, every, it is the number one topic for any 911 manager. But the way you do it today is on the left. The people in the center have to do two things. They're on the radio, and then, they have an order, they have a process that they use, but they also need to answer the telephone calls, the 911 calls. The risk of that that we don't care for is you can have a collision, right? I'm trying to talk to somebody on the phone, at the same time, somebody's trying to talk to me on the radio. You lose messages. The best practice is you have people that talk on the phone and other people that talk on the radio. And that's the example that you see on the right. So that's the goal. You need to get the software, the software deployed. You need to implement the revision to the response protocol we talked about. You need to get the staffing addressed. So there's elements to work on, but in talking with Mr. Tuttle and his staff, they understand it. I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in principle, they understand our recommendations and, you know, agree with them in principle, and so as you work forward towards that, I think that can help add value. And finally, what is this cost? Because ultimately, as somebody who formerly had to worry about the budget part and deal with an elected body, it's always, what's the cost? The manager alluded, probably five full-time equivalents. Here's why. Today, in the top left, is your current staffing in the 911 center. We always refer to, if I can, a seat. How many hours do I need somebody sitting in a seat? And we quantify that over a 24-hour period. So today, it requires 144 hours of people sitting in seats over a 24-hour period to run your system. The recommendations we've made, adjusting the channels, this and that, we recommended dedicated people on phones, dedicated people on radio, and you would require 168 a seat, one additional seat, over 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, seven days a week, would take about five more positions. So it's one additional seat, about five FTEs. If you notice, this is called Model N. That was not a random letter. It was in fact, after we tried Model A, Model B, Model C, and on and on, which is why the time we take to do this, trying to refine. And it was not done in a vacuum. During that process, we came back, met with the police department, went with fire, met with 911, talked about it, here's what we're seeing, let's get some feedback from them. In essence, that's the process we went through. All of it tied back to the very beginning of the questions the manager alluded to. What's the right resource, going to which calls? Is our system running, first, both effectively and, second, efficiently? So that really is the presentation. I or Mr. Fuentes are happy to answer any questions. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, do you have anything before we go to, before we go to questions here? Okay?
We're good.
Questions for Dr. Mueller or Mr. Fuentes? I'm not seeing anything in light, so I think that going back to the manager's quick PowerPoint presentation, you know, one of the things I think a lot of people were maybe misinformed about was the direction of this discussion tonight because it's focusing on the dispatch side, which is what we were charged to do, and, or what you were charged to do, and the information that you brought forward to us. As we can see, there's a lot of, just a ton of data here that I think, and I'm assuming that, knowing we have a lot of smart people within the organization, they might have been able to put this information together, but they wouldn't have been able to do their regular job at the same time. So I think that, at least for me, justifies having this information done by the professionals that know how to do it. But the pending recommendations, I don't know what slide that was, Mr. Manager, that you had, but the pending recommendations are additional staffings in dispatch, introduction of BLS transport ambulances, and the implementation of the revised EMS response protocols. That's what, that's what we're really talking about here. In terms of a timeframe on that happening?
Well, there's, clearly, we've got seven positions in the, in the ECC, just to get up to full staffing, that we're, we're working to try and fill. If we were to come back to you with a, with a request to add five additional positions to fill that seventh seat in the ECC, it would mean we'd have, we'd need 12 positions that we'd have to fill. That's something we could certainly do. We're going to continue to work to try and fill those seats. The challenge we have is that it's, with the staff being as low that it is, you can't bring people in on overtime because they're already working a lot of overtime hours as it is. And I think Director Tuttle would tell you, that's one of the challenges that we have and why we need to fill those, those positions. But that's, that's primary. I mean, because then, that's one of the pieces that will allow those EMS protocols to be implemented that were just discussed, that taking all of those, those six levels of severity and figuring out the 14 different response protocols that AMT, the fire department, and the medical director worked out.
So are we assuming that everybody's on the same page on this? And when I say everybody, I'm talking about dispatch, fire department?
I'm not aware of any objection between AMT and the fire department or the project medical director over the EMS protocols. It's my understanding, everyone went through that and was in agreement that this, in the future state, would be the way that they would want to respond to those medical calls.
And so...
May I, Mr. Mayor? What we approached this on was really on a white paper best practice approach. And really, we're quite proud of the team that was there because, you know, there could be a lot of confusing factors around system design. They all came together, understood, you know, looking at the data for each call type, what they assigned, what they went back with, you know, was it really a hot call when they were going back to the hospital, did it justify? So they became much more medically centric in designing the system, and as a medical centric system, the 14 levels of response are much more appropriate than the collapsed version that you had, which duplicated several resources and underserviced several of the resources.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. In terms of the, I understand the need to staff up, but, so the implementation of the revised EMS protocols, I mean, is that, is that something that will happen when we get the new software in place and have?
Well, maybe I'll, I'll turn to Director Tuttle to let him explain what the, the plan is once we have the Pro QA system up and, and running. If Director could come up and just kind of explain what will, the next steps in that process for you.
The next step is to, to complete the purchase of the Pro QA electronic software. And then, what we'll need to do is get the stakeholders back together and using some of the stuff that we, the prioritization that we had done before, basically implement that at that particular point in time. So it's, once the software's in place, it'll be a lot easier to categorize those in the subcategories that they, that they recommended, more so than what the cards were.
So do you have any comments in terms of the general form of the discussion this evening? Is there anything you take exception with? I mean, I'm going to ask the same question from AMT and Fire, so I want to make sure that, you know, if everybody's in agreement on what the recommendations are and all we have to do is figure out how to make it happen, it's a lot different discussion.
We, we support the findings of Fitch. We don't necessarily agree with the consolidation of the radios, talk groups in the manner that, that they necessarily prescribed, and they're fully aware of that, but we agree with the call taker approach, with a surge telecommunicator to assist during those times of busy times, and then consolidating the radios down from, from six to five. So we do, we do agree with that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Director Tuttle, maybe before you leave, I think we might have a question here for you from Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. While you're there, a couple of questions. Once we purchase the software, what's the length of time for the implementation? Do you know, or have an estimate?
I would say that the estimated time, by time we install the software, test it, integrate it with our CAD system, go through all of the, the protocols, do the training for the telecommunicators, we're probably looking at early, early fall.
Okay. And, and then, my other question relates to, you know, given the historical difficulty of keeping the dispatchers fully staffed, I mean, since I started working here 25 years ago, that was an issue. Is it viable, is it really realistic and viable for us to hire 12 more dispatchers in the next year or two? I mean, I'm just, I mean, how realistic is that?
Well, we are doing more creative things to, to bring telecommunicators in the door. So we do believe that we will make strides by, by fall, so hopefully, we'll have three to four more trained personnel by September, October, and hopefully by the end of the year, be up to five or six persons, so.
How many historically for the, on average, have we had, what has staff been over the last three years?
Well, we, we were one person down in 2011 before the early retirement hit, and then we lost 11 people within 12 months. So we have been recovering since 2011, trying to get those positions refilled.
We've had about five, right? Five to seven, five to, or lower?
Five to seven. We're down seven personnel right now.
So we have how many dispatchers?
We have 23 telecommunicators right now.
Okay. My other question, I don't know if it goes to you, Director Tuttle, or to City Manager, what's the estimated cost if we were to adopt your, the proposal to hire five additional dispatchers?
They start out at about $21.82 an hour. So that would be...
And with benefits? Can you, I mean, I, can you give us a ballpark of, of what you're asking us?
It's about $365,000 a year with benefits.
Okay. And then, with regards to the software, my understanding is the county already purchased it, so that, will there be additional costs for that?
Nope, not at this time. We're working through the contract negotiations at the moment, but there would be no additional cost the ETSB at this point in time would pay for, as they have in the past, the, the EMD program.
Okay. And then I have one other question, I, but it's probably more directed to the City Manager. If we implement then the recommendations with regard, and maybe we've already started to do it, I'm not sure, with regards to whether A, the ambulance, AMT goes to the less serious calls and the fire department doesn't, is that something that we have to negotiate with AMT? That's not covered in our franchise agreement with them?
The extended timeframe for the response time, the transport performance target, extending that out would require a franchise agreement change. But, but as far as, I believe that everyone else is, that has been working on this is in agreement, that this was the, the route that they wanted to go forward with, so...
But I guess, I guess I would just want to make sure we've checked the agreement. I haven't looked, seen the agreement because it...
Sure.
I think we renew it every 10 years or more, so that was prior to me being on the council. So I'd like to know if we, if there's anything in there that we need to negotiate regarding this plan.
The, the performance target, the change in that would require a change to the franchise agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
I have Councilwoman Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions. Mr. Manager, are any of our dispatchers currently certified under this program?
Yes, sir. Every one of our telecommunicators has EMD certification and is licensed by the Department of Public Health.
Thank you, Mr. Director. And is our center certified?
Center is licensed by the Illinois Department of Public Health to provide emergency medical dispatch, but we are not an accredited center.
Okay. Thank you. And either Dr. Mueller or Dr. Fuentes, among those cities you've worked with, is that a, kind of a typical answer? That, first of all, the dispatchers are certified, the, the center is not, and...
Yes.
You just talk around that.
Yeah, let me, let me talk about the accreditation. It, it's best practice to have accreditation, but less than 3% of dispatch centers actually achieve accreditation. It's a very high standard. They've changed it a little bit, so I'm, I'm going to freelance what they, they interpret today, but really, it means that on each one of the protocols, you are, are being categorizing at about 97% of the time, the right questions in each one of the categories. So it's a very high standard to achieve. It doesn't mean that that's, that you need to achieve that necessarily. It doesn't mean that that's, that you need to achieve that necessarily to implement this. Many, many centers, the vast majority do not, like I said, only about 3% of the centers in North America achieve it. And worldwide, I think it's a little lower than that.
Thank you. And, Mr. Director, what sort of turnover do we generally have within the dispatcher population?
Our turnover right now is at about 40 to 45%.
That's an annual number.
No, well, most of those, most of that turnover is within the first year of a new hire. If, if the employee is with us for a year or more, then typically they're there for a good period of time.
Okay, that was my... Maybe I can address, that question keeps coming up circulating. Strategically, even if you're optimal and now are considered a very good dispatch center North America-wide, you will land somewhere between a 16 and 22% attrition rate. That means you've done everything right. You've got the quiet rooms, the lunchrooms, the exercise, all that. Jazz, you're still gonna attrition. So in the future moment with your dispatch center, you'll want to be pre-planning that attrition. So what generally happens is people are, as you know, your attrition rate may stabilize your hiring in lieu of the fact that people are gonna be leaving.
And how long does it take a new employee to become certified?
Typically, for someone to be on their own, it takes about six months, and then they would take emergency medical dispatch training, so probably within the first nine months.
Thank you very much.
I had Councilman Ruckel next.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions for Mr. Fuentes or Mr. Mueller. BLS, it seems like some of the stuff that I'm reading lately has changed a little bit of time, and I know that, we talk a lot about BLS and ALS. And has BLS, from the way that you're judging it, has that changed over the years, as what maybe the typical person might think it is?
Well, if not, you should go historically too far back, and then it wouldn't, it wouldn't have validity. The reality is, what we considered ALS or BLS at a different point in time has really changed. So that's one of the reasons the outcome differences are not as pronounced as they once were. ALS, even in my day, and I was paramedic in 1989, was the people that were allowed to defibrillate. So if you take that same, and defibrillation in all studies has shown to be the number one reason people either come back from cardiac arrest or not, and now it's a, it's a tool that can be used by the common citizen. Right? So if you look at that spectrum of medicine over time, the same thing has happened with all the other skill sets. So BLS today can intervene with Narcan, it can intervene with F and F and P's, can intervene with different drug therapies at a basic level that a long time ago would have only been considered an advanced level of support. So they've really narrowed that scope. What we're noticing with paramedics today is really their diagnostic skills are higher because they have a higher level of training. But if you're in an urban setting, in a closed environment, where the, you can always opt to transport to a close hospital, the differentiation between BLS and ALS has become less and less.
And I think one of the things you mentioned in some of the research that I was reading is the fact that we're kind of unique in some situations because of the hospital locations and the number of hospitals that we have within the city. Am I reading, do I remember that correctly as I was reading through there?
That is absolutely correct. The closer you are in an urban setting to a hospital environment, the less skill sets you're supposed to practice. It's really coming in inverse model, and that's kind of what Dr. Mueller was suggesting. The study in Chicago and then later done by Johns Hopkins University on trauma shows almost a 15% better outcome if you got shot or stabbed by just simply putting you in your car and driving you to the hospital, rather than waiting for an ambulance to pick you up. Because the urban setting, the hospital, has such a high level of care, definitive care, that the transport differentiation doesn't, doesn't matter. It's really when you get further and further away, when you have a lot of time to practice skills, that, that the differentiation matters. But as soon as you become in an urban setting, as soon as you get close to a hospital, the advantage of going to a hospital supersedes the level of care that you're giving in the field.
So it seems like, and I appreciate the capacity slide on there, I think it was maybe slide 11 or 14, and the fact that you said you don't want to go all the way up to that 0.3%, you know, because I think quickly you think you can automatically go there, but I think you showed the differences there. And, you know, from showing that, and I think that some of the reproducible evidence we've seen here on, on what happens, that, you know, neither speed response nor ALS is necessarily an indicator of the outcome for an out-of-hospital emergency. And I think Dr. Jackson, if we go back a year and a half ago, made similar comments right here in front of us, I think, which caught us a little bit off guard. Not his comments, but the fact that I think that we as the public automatically assume the, the higher level of care is the ultimate gold standard. Can you just again give us, I guess, just for the public, for ourselves, a little bit more about the evidence-based understanding of response time versus ALS/BLS?
The, the reality is the response time. The challenge isn't the response time or ALS or BLS, is like most emerging sciences, emergency medical services is a young profession. So what we did in surrogate of having proof, we put quantifiable numbers to system design. So the early public utility models, which most of this is based around and adopted by the NFPA, was really an approach of a generally accepted number. That's why it's such a bizarre number. It's an eight minutes and 59 seconds. It's not a nine minute, it's not an eight minute. It was what was being done in King County. That was their performance standard. They were considered one of the best systems, and it was reproduced by Richmond, Macklinburg, et cetera. So now, we're, that's the early 80s. Early 2000s, being that we were a medical field, medicine caught up to us and said, okay, well, let's take a look at that number, 859. Where does it really mean? And it ended up being nowhere. It's a no man's land number. It means absolutely nothing. The spectrum between six and 12 changed absolutely no outcomes. Cardiac arrest, if you're not there in under five minutes with a defibrillator, doesn't matter. And as you saw in dispatch, between dispatch and turnout, you've already consumed that time, so it's really a citizen approach to that. So what we, what we're starting to look at today is more and more evidence-based practice. And real outcomes are being assigned to EMS. The practice of medicine is being measured against the practice of medicine. So in a future design of your system, one day, you'll most probably remove the constraint of response time, which is a surrogate measure to being a high-performing system, and replace it at some point with medical. I do these skills, well, I check all these boxes, and they stay two days less in the hospital. That's a measure. That's an outcome measure that you did some actions here, and they had a medical consequence here. There's no correlation between I did this really quickly and there's a medical correlation here. That's the problem.
And I think, you know, in the presentation, you know, what came out loud and clear is I think that the city and the citizens ought to be really proud of our system. AMT, the Fire Department, working together to provide what sounds like really hitting a lot of the marks on the top there. I know recently, probably in the past couple of years, Fire and AMT have worked together on quality improvement, taking some of those calls, looking back at them, seeing what went right, what, and kind of use those as a learning curve. And a lot of what we're seeing on timeframe and talking about today is really on the dispatch side. Are we doing, and from looking at our procedures that we're doing internally, I guess, on the dispatch side, do we have quality improvement procedures going on right now? Are we doing that periodically, whether that be every 30, 60, 90 days? Or is that something that we need to implement?
It, it really is something you need to implement. The reality is the lack of staffing in the dispatch center has really forced the staff that you have to be practitioners, not quality assurance people. In our recommendation, we actually recommend, I believe, third-party oversight on that. There's, there's National Q, which you become electronic that can do it, and then you're able to have medical oversight on it. One thing that most people don't, may not realize, is the Medical Director of your system has to sign off on your dispatch protocols and has an obligation to review most of the life-changing, so the ones that have pre-arrival instructions, has to review them to tell you that the practice of that, and accept some of them. It's like childbirth, for example. Some, some systems don't allow the dispatchers to provide childbirth instructions, some do. Those kinds of things are very medical and are driven by the Medical Director of your system.
You know, and in a system where I think that, in the past, we've talked about locations of, of fire stations, response times of that nature, but I think from, if I'm hearing you correct, and please confirm for me if I am, that really by looking at the dispatch call center as our first line here, and looking at how we triage, just like you do on, on the battlefield, you triage to get the biggest effect there, that we can actually translate that for the citizens into a safer and more expeditions, a quicker response with the right equipment for those calls that really need the right service.
Right. It, it is exactly the same model that you do when you go to a hospital. When you go to a hospital, you see a triage nurse, and their only role is to assign a level of acuity to you, so you're gonna get seen first, you're gonna get seen after, and it goes by acuity. It's the same concept that's carried out into the field. Resources are scarce, you have to have available resources to achieve a level of response, whatever you choose it to be. And if you're using all the resources on every call, you're dumping the house, then the reality is your ability to keep resources in reserve are not gonna be there. So that's really the key. It allows you to really filter your system, or titrate if you prefer, your call intake, and then redirect the resources to that.
So I guess one final question, and it goes back to the staffing, and I appreciate Councilwoman Jensen's questions on staffing, because those were going through, and I made a lot of notes about that here. And since 2011, you know, we, we were as close, you know, with that minus one, and we've been sort of chasing after that since then. A lot has changed since, what'd you say, '76, when all this protocol came into place, and stress levels are extremely difficult. We're talking about the number of calls that have gone up. Pay is one piece of being able to hire and retain, and especially on the retention piece, it comes to the quality of the experience of the work as well. And it's not cheap putting this new system into place. But from what you're seeing from other 911 centers, can that translate into a better work environment, having the technology that makes, maybe not the stress level difference, but the operation different a little bit? And that might also translate into us having lower turnover and more retention, which might be a very special key to making this whole problem come into place.
There really is, in dispatch centers, three key components, right? So, for retention. And like I said, even if you're excellent in this, you'll still be somewhere between 16 and 22%. Because unlike field practitioners, the practitioner inside of a dispatch center generally doesn't see any outcomes. They're generally there to receive the worst of the call, hand it off, and maybe or maybe not, they will find out that something's good or not. So they have a very low loop of retroactivity that allows them to feel satisfied. So there's always a challenge. There's an upward mobility challenge in dispatch centers. You know, you can go from a dispatcher to a supervisor, or maybe manager, but it's a very small mobility scale. So there's a couple of real things that will lay against you. But the three things that you have to have to be successful in managing a dispatch center is you have to have the right technology, you absolutely have to have the right funding. Whenever I hear that you're living off of chronic overtime, you're guaranteed to have people turnover at much higher ratios. They just, they can't handle that level of work. It's not well-recommended to keep them in that level of work. And number three, you have to have a healthy environment for them. So if their dispatch centers are grungy, dull, dark, no breakout rooms, no quiet time for them, you tend to see higher turnovers.
Thank you.
I had Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start with a general comment that will kind of date myself. Found out today that high school do not teach typewriting anymore. And after talking with Mr. Tuttle, what is one qualification that we need in hiring our staff at the call center? Mr. Tuttle, what's the answer to that question? Yeah, am I correct in saying you're looking for at least 40 to 45 words per minute?
Our requirement's 40 words a minute, 10 hours or less.
So I hate to, to, to date myself, but I can't believe we're not teaching typing to kids anymore, especially when we have a shortage of, of employees. Question for Mr. Mueller. On one of your slides, you're talking about five years of CAD average or, or research, and you only use one year, 2017. Why 2017 versus any of the other four years?
So we look for five full years of data, and when we started the project, that was, you know, came up through 20, calendar year 2017. We look at the full five years to identify trends in data, whether call volumes going up, there are spikes or decreases in calls by call type, law, fire, EMS, and within that. So that's for trend data. Tonight's presentation, I focused only on the last year. Most of the report focused on that because we use performance based on that, because the performance will be influenced more, the busier the center is or the less busy it is. So that's just one of the processes. So the five years is to look at trend, to see if there's trends that you may need to be aware of. Most call centers are experiencing a growth between three and six to seven percent growth, so your, your center, and it's reported in full in the date, full data report, but we didn't see anything unusual there. I was just giving you kind of the high level tonight.
You said, you made a comment about it's not just Peoria, it's everybody around the country having difficulties being fully staffed. Excuse me. Do you see a correlation between unemployment rate? Is any year is better than another? Unemployment's so low right now, I mean, is that one of the problem that calling center are having around the country?
Anecdotally, talking to 911 managers, they state that with lower unemployment, they're getting less applicants. Again, not speaking to the quality of the applicants. So there is a challenge with that, and may have contributed to maybe more recent trends in attrition rates. So anecdotally, but there's no real good research on that within the 911.
Last question, sir. This report tonight, you talked a couple of time about, is this really based on 27,154 calls, basically? This is what this whole report is based on?
I'm sorry?
It's this, your report tonight, is it based on 27,154 calls? All your research says right here on your slides.
The descriptive statistics that I reported on were based on those 27,000 incidents, and of that, the majority of that was on EMS when we looked at the medical, so I think that was 21,000 or 22,000, 23,000, I think it was about 23,000 EMS incidents. So it's based on that 2017 data.
So we're trying to improve our call center, correct? One of the, one of the, one of your, what's the word I'm looking for? Recommendation is to, no, how to improve the call center, correct?
Yes, sir.
So when I talked to Mr. Tuttle though, yesterday I was visiting with him, and he told me that about 82% of the calls, the call center come from our, for police, our Peoria Police, 82%. 8% are directed to our county police. So we have 10% less, or 10% a call, 10% of calls are leave for this report. How can we make a good recommendation for the call center if, by my calculation, the call center receives probably over 200,000 calls a year, and we're only addressing 10% of the calls? So how can we address only 10% of calls and, and making the recommendation to how to improve our call center?
Yeah, so thank you, yes. Let me clarify that. So in the descriptive statistics, in the first part, when I talked about phase one, we looked at fire and EMS, and so that was the 27,000 incidents that we talked about in 2017. With regard to 911, we used all call activity. That's the only way we could sit there and look at call volume based on every channel, every position. So we looked at the sheriff's office, we looked at Peoria PD, we looked at Peoria Heights. We, we had the full data because we received the five years of CAD data included, all of that. I didn't show the high-level numbers on those, but within the modeling, all of that was used. Every, all the phone call data, all the, the phone call data, the telephony, the 911 system, and the administrative lines, the radio system, and the full amount of all data in CAD, including law as well. So that was all used in that, in the modeling on that part. Yeah, I didn't make that clear, so I apologize for that.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple more questions for our City Manager. Since my colleague asked about funding, tell us about 911 surcharge calls. How much of that, and how much money are we raising monthly or yearly?
Well, the, the 911 surcharge is collected on a countywide basis. There's the Peoria County Emergency Telephone System Board that manages those proceeds. The city does not receive any of those dollars. We fund and staff the dispatch center out of the We fund and staff the dispatch center out of the city's general fund. Much of the software, much of the equipment that's inside our emergency communication center is funded by the ETSB. Maybe I could ask Director Tuttle to just kind of give you a high-level overview of what that total budget is for the ETSB on a, on kind of an annual basis, so that you can at least get a picture of where those dollars are coming from.
Thank you.
The 911 surcharge varies by month, depending on a whole wide range of items. Right now, we receive about $220,000 a month of 911 surcharge in Peoria County. That money goes into a fund, and then the board uses that money for hardware, software, equipment, telephone equipment, mapping equipment, and then the upgrade, of course, to the two dispatch centers that is ongoing at the moment.
Another question for Mr. Tuttle. Have you received grants this year, or 2019 or 2020?
We've received three grants so far from the state of Illinois. $1.1 million to upgrade the two dispatch centers, which we're in process right now to do. We received a $530,000 grant to upgrade the phone system, which was completed in July of last year, and a $100,000 grant to work in cooperation with 13 other counties to upgrade the mapping systems and GIS systems for 911.
So will all this money be used to move from the third floor to the second floor by the end of 2020, then?
The surcharge money will pay for the dispatch center improvements to move to the second floor, and for an upgrade at Bartonville, which is the backup dispatch center for Peoria, and vice versa, Peoria's the backup for Bartonville.
So we shouldn't need any money from the general fund, then?
Not for, not for the construction side. And I think that's an important point, and I think that Mr. Fuentes mentioned that about, you know, the challenge of having a dispatch, an older dispatch center like we currently have, and making it attractive for new employees. And I think this move will help us as we start to bring that dispatch center up to a state-of-the-art dispatch center, and I think that's something that will help, hopefully, to attract new employees when they come in and see the work environment that they'll be, they'll be operating in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I had Councilmember Grab next.
I just have enjoyed very much listening to the presentation, especially as it causes me to reflect upon the wonderful work that's done on a daily basis by our Peoria Fire Department and our emergency dispatchers. I believe our Peoria Fire Department has about 134 years of real-life experience in the area of fire rescue, and they have to know something about what is being discussed here tonight. And then we have Director Tuttle. Director Tuttle, could you come forward again, please, and I don't mean to wear you out. Director Tuttle is one of the heroes of our city. He's been with our city for, what, 30-some years?
37.
Amazing professional. And here we are tonight, discussing the difficulty we have keeping some of our emergency dispatch people, while all the while we are saying that many of them are being paid, what, under $22 an hour? Did I hear that correctly?
Starting salary.
So emergency 911, what is, what is your emergency? Well, we're stressed out, and we're not paid very much, and now you're going to be asking, we're going to be asking them to make complaint severity analysis from omega, alpha, bravo, charlie, delta, echo, and they're going to be the ones, because we're so concerned about redundancy, they're going to be the ones who are going to have to make these life-and-death decisions. And sorry, but you may not just have fallen not hitting your head, it could be something that they can't even discern how serious the call is. There's a lot that's happening here tonight, a lot of implications for what's being discussed. But I can tell you one thing, when our citizens call 911, they want prompt response, the quickest response possible. And if it's one of our loved ones who is needing the help, somebody is choking or having a heart attack or chest pains, and we're wondering if there isn't a better way of doing this to reduce redundancy, gosh, we don't want AMT and the fire department going out, then we better be sure we have people we can retain who really are able to make these godlike decisions. Omega, alpha, bravo, charlie, delta, echo, really, are we going to do that? I don't trust this at all. And I say it because I have for a long time believed, and my constituents do too, that our number-one responsibility is public safety. That is a core, basic service. And this obsession about redundancy, it's just that, it's an obsession which I'm afraid could result in people dying. Putting way too much responsibility on that emergency dispatcher. We can't keep them now, folks. Now you're going to expect them to make all these high-level decisions, and they're nowhere near the scene, they're trying to do their very best, and we expect a good outcome. City Council, we're paying them under $22 an hour. Seriously, really? And they're going to do this omega, alpha, bravo, charlie, delta, echo, and we can't even keep them now? We're so worried about redundancy. You will be very happy that we have a redundancy there when it's you on the ground and somebody hasn't figured out how serious your situation is. Thank you.
Director Tuttle, before you go, just for clarification, we're already using that, that medical priority dispatch system now, right?
Yes, we've, we're using the alpha, bravo, charlie, delta.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you. I had Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Direct, I think this goes to the city manager. On your pending recommendations listing, we've talked about additional staffing in dispatch and implementation of the revised protocols. You have something listed as introduction of BLS transport ambulances. Is that not something that we have today? And if it's not something we have today, what does that mean as far as staffing and equipment needs?
That's, that's with AMT, and that would be, one of the discussion points was that part of the implementation would be to look at creating or introducing an ambulance that had basic, basic life support services with that. So that's part of the recommendations that fall under the AMT and the transport side of the operation. So that would turn to, to our friends and partners at AMT.
Do we know if, I don't know if anyone here that can speak to that, is that something that they are prepared to implement if we decide to move in that direction?
That would be a question I think we'd have to ask. I think Tom Geraci from, from AMT, or Andrew Rand, the executive director, are here.
Dr. Hevesey?
Yes, I'm George Hevesey. I'm the medical director at AMT, and former EMS medical director from 1986 to 2001. And we are very interested in introducing BLS ambulances. From a historical perspective, I think that the medical community historically has been very interested in public safety, and that's why the hospitals paid for the first course to bring Jeff Clausen in and teach it, because we realize when there's smoke in dispatch, there's fire in the system. And that's why I convinced Jeff to come in. He said he won't come back anymore, because he was so scared when I drove him to the airport, because he was going to be late to his flight, he almost had a heart attack. The bottom line is that I took that course myself, I'm a certified dispatcher, because we wanted to get the dispatchers comfortable and give them some of the feedback, so they would see what was going on with the patients and what outcomes they had. We had some QA conferences then, too. I think at that time, we went to an all ALS system to make sure that everybody got optimal care, but that was really before, as it was presented here earlier, evidence-based medicine started coming out. And we started finding out that the things that we've always done, because we've always done it that way with research, we changed some of the things we did. So the time has come for us to start looking at who we're sending the right ambulance and the right personnel to the right calls. And alpha, bravo, charlie, delta has been utilized by Dave Tuttle's crew since 1990 on a daily basis. And those cards are tested by millions of calls a year throughout the country. So the answer to the question, yes, AMT is very interested in.
What would be the, what would prohibit you from, if we decide to move with our additional staffing, which I agree, if we can't replace the seven that we need now, it's going to be difficult to get up to 12, but we can try, maybe we can even, Mr. Tuttle, you know, offer, sweeten the pot a little bit, maybe $25 an hour, I don't know. But what would be the impediment to staffing up to, to reach what this study and recommendations are indicating? Would that mean, as we talked about, maybe in a year's time, we could staff up to seven to 12? Would that mean in maybe a year's time, maybe 18 months before, you would be able to then provide the BLS transportation services?
Well, we can, we can provide the BLS transport, but it's, the assumption is that it's just BLS that's needed. Okay? So if you come see me in the emergency department, you're getting a board-certified emergency physician. I don't always have a cardiothoracic surgeon with me. Okay? So I'm doing the triage there, and I'm deciding what I need. The triage, that's going to be done by the dispatchers, is critical to sending the right people.
I had Councilmember Regenbach next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What a great discussion this has been, and I think a lot of the things that I had jotted down have been addressed, but I don't think we can reiterate the staffing aspect of that 911 center enough. To think that we're going to solve it, like Councilman Seer referenced, the incredibly low unemployment rate right now, and people are much choosier about jobs, and it's not just the dollar amount, but it's the working conditions as well. So there's a lot of aspects that we don't expect you, Director Tuttle, to solve on your own, but I think need to be part of the discussion as we move forward. Talking about moving forward, Mr. Manager, if you could just help me again, and this has probably been addressed at some point, the timeline, if, if the decision is made, where is the decision on the new software?
That decision's been done.
That was last.
That's, that, no, we, we had nothing to do with that. That was, the Emergency Telephone System Board funded the software. So now it's, it's also that the Emergency Telephone System Board was able to secure a grant and is using some of their funds to help us to upgrade the dispatch center. So we need to upgrade the dispatch center, we need to implement the software, we need to continue to try and fill the staffing needs that we can as quickly as we can to fill those, at a minimum, the seven vacant that we have. We need to come back to you with a recommendation about the five additional positions, if that's something you, as the council, want to, to go forward with, so that that's on the, that would be a decision point for this council to make. But everything else up to that point, there's no decision for the council to make. The funding for the soft, for the, for the center has been provided, purchase of the software has been made, it's now simply execution on the 91, or the ECC side, in order to be able to train the staff as, the same time as we're building a new, and constructing a new ECC. So those are the steps that we'll have on our end. If we're able to then accomplish all of that, as you heard, AMT will be looking at the BLS transport. The next point that we would have to come back to you would be if we have to make any change to the franchise agreement on the, the performance standard for AMT, going from nine, eight point 59 seconds to 10.59 seconds, that, or 10 minutes and 59 seconds, that, that would necessitate a change to the franchise agreement. At that point, if we're able to do all of that, we start to implement the changes to the EMS protocols. There's nothing for council to do in that regard, there's no decision point for you to make. That is an operational issue between AMT and the Peoria Fire Department and the project medical director.
While you bring that part of the sequence up, the way the discussion has been, it sounds as if those EMS protocols haven't been looked at for years, but my understanding is that's an ongoing discussion that the project medical director has with the fire department and AMT. So this, to update those is part of the normal course of the way we do business, isn't it?
There's always, you know, we've had, Dr. Jackson has been here before, and he's, he's mentioned the fact that they've looked at, at how well we're performing, they look at, as a system. I mean, everyone operates in this emergency medical sphere under Dr. Jackson's license. So that's important to recognize, is that everyone is there working under his medical license. So there is that handoff and trade-off between entities, and it's important that they review that and look at how they're working all the time, and I believe that they do that on a regular and recurring basis. We have, within, within the fire department, we have Chief Roland Tenley, who is working in that regard, and provides that assistance to do the quality assurance and work for the fire department, as they look at how they've responded to EMS calls, and that's something we'll continue to do.
So this map is pretty, pretty well-defined if we choose to take it to the slight decisions that we can make. I think Councilman Grab is always the voice for those that are picking up the phone to dial that, those three digits, though, and to have that prompt, professional response is something that I think is, nobody in this room would, would argue with that. I think it's our responsibility, and to see the amount of incredible work that's already been done at this level, this is 2020, folks, and to think of the archaic way some of this work is still being done, and the conditions that it's being done, I think to, to update and make those improvements is only going to be a logical outreach of what our fiduciary responsibility needs to be, to continue to provide that prompt, professional service. Just, I, I guess, it just makes me pause to think of the way that this has been politicized in so many ways, and I think the discussions that we've had, and having Chief Artis involved in this from the get-go, I think, gives this a certain amount of credibility, and we need to make sure that we don't just hear from the senior leadership, but that we hear through the rank and file as well, and the people at the dispatch center are the ones who will actually be implementing this and providing that prompt, professional response that, that we all say we want. So looking forward to seeing how we can expedite this and do what we can as a council to make sure that this gets done. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Director Tuttle, and that's based on, Director, my question- Director, my question's on the phone calls that come in. I guess when we first rate them in our rating system, and how accurate are they? So like, somebody calls and they think it's one thing, then, you know, we respond, we find out it's something different. How accurate are those? And I guess then my question would probably go back to the people, the Fitch company, on which data did they use?
Well, a lot of it's based on what the caller tells the telecommunicator. So if they call in and they say one thing, and it turns out to be something different, then we review those. AMT will communicate with us or Peoria Fire, and we will go back and review those. But some of that, you're really at the mercy of what the caller tells you, and many times it's third or fourth party.
So is that, like, 99% of the time, it doesn't get changed? What...
Maybe I could address it more generally.
Let me ask real quick. Well, you're the one who's...
I don't know the percentage. The vast majority of the time.
Rarely?
Feel free to ask AMT and Peoria Fire, but I believe that the vast majority of the time, when they arrive on the scene, unless it's a situation unknown, a person down, unknown, or something like that. But if they're calling in from a residential or a business, typically the caller is giving fairly accurate information, whether it's a diabetic problem, conscious status, chest pains, that sort of thing.
Okay. So the way the protocol is designed, it's designed over triage, right? So you're extraordinarily accurate at the high levels. Your echo responses, the cardiac res, are almost always cardiac res. Very rarely do they miss those, right? Your delta responses to higher, you have a high probability they... So they did a study of ACE accredited, so the accredited centers, they took six of them, and they compared them. It goes something, from memory, so you can't quote me later, from memory, it's like 93% accuracy on echoes, 76, 78% on deltas, and then it goes around 60% for Charlie. And Charlie's a hard category because it's really trying to determine whether or not you need advanced care, not necessarily that it's high acuity advanced care, it just happens to need advanced care. And then the category that kind of bulks together is the alpha response. And it's not that it's not accurate, is a lot of the alpha responses tend to get bumped into a Bravo. So they... It's not... So they tend to over-triage the alphas because they don't want to make a mistake on a low-acuity call, so they give it a higher response. But the very high ones are very accurate, and they take very little time. It's also very... The intuitive algorithm, those are first six questions that they ask are always trying to ascertain whether or not you're having an event that's life-threatening. That's really how it goes. And then it keeps building off of those question sets and a yes/no answer to kind of go down an algorithmic tree to get you to a point of whether it's a low-acuity call or not. So it has a lot of failsafes built in at any given time, no matter what I started with. If I say I'm going, it's unconscious now, or he stops breathing, it shunts it right back to the beginning. So it's a very fail-safe program. And one of the reasons the computerized version is significantly better than the handheld version is it's a much... The computer does that for you, rather than having the person try to figure out whether they got a shunt back. The computer shunts it back to the beginning.
Good. One of the reasons why I'm asking as well, in the past year, I was at Hy-Vee, saw a gentleman laying on the ground, some people around him, ends up having a seizure. But at that point, they were ready to start... The people around him were ready to start CPR on him, didn't know what was going on with him. Eventually came to, but I mean, we're talking right as emergency personnel arrived. So I was like, well, how does this get booked here? I've seen another situation, it was at church. Lady fainted, and it looked pretty serious. She had a moment of having a seizure, and she got up and walked out, and they left. So I'm like, so how does... You know, these are just a couple examples that I saw, and I just was wondering, how does this get booked for us? And if we're going to be making these decisions on data, I was just wondering, how does that get booked? Is it from, right from the phone call, or we go back and change it later on when we find out it wasn't that?
Well, the initial call is done by the phone call and what the caller states. But once the situation's found, then the medical reports would indicate what they found once they arrived on the scene. So an individual reported one way, maybe something else, but that's categorized for the final medical report.
Gotcha. Okay. So that, those were my questions for you. And just, I guess, one last comment here for our city manager. Going forward, I'd like to see kind of what the business model is for this. Our costs versus any revenues that are brought in, both for the Peoria Fire Department versus AMT. You know, I'm sure we want to, at the end of the day, make a good business decision for the city, knowing that this is a business decision without sacrificing public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilman Grab.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. City Manager Urick, you mentioned that we are having or about to have serious franchise negotiations with AMT.
No. What I was saying is that if we make the change to the performance metric, that would necessitate a change in the franchise agreement. It's a modification to the franchise agreement.
That would necessitate a change in what I'm sorry?
The performance standard in the franchise agreement requires AMT to respond in eight minutes and 59 seconds.
The CEO for AMT is here. I wonder if you could come on up. I must confess, I have a bit of a bias because AMT is located in District Two. And I've been there, and they have a hardened bunker that's unbelievable. Parsons Manufacturing, I mean, we love U2, but Andrew Ran runs a tight ship. We've been talking about AMT, and we talk about our Peoria Fire Department. Do you anticipate the need to acquire more ambulances as we go forward based on this analysis?
I don't know. I'd have to model it. I don't think so. I think our fleet's pretty big. Certainly the trucks that are in service providing advanced life support, those crews, they're basic life support crews in Peoria every day, doing different things. So in terms of the fleet or additional costs, our capacity to absorb some more or adjust our schedules, more of one color advanced life support, or more of one color basic life support versus advanced life support, I think that would be our model. But I don't really anticipate costs. I do see... Excuse me, I've got a cold. Our transaction volume changes. Some of the calls that are being dropped out of fire response are calls that we may need to incentivize the callers differently. For example, those Lyft assists, I don't believe it's the public responsibility, nor will we agree in a franchise agreement for it to be our responsibility to be the picker-upper of people for skilled nursing homes, or anyone else for that matter. Whether it's a true public interest in a private home or somebody, it's a different story. But there may be incentives to disincentivize that kind of behavior. But right now, I think it is part of the calls that are being passed to us in the first iteration of the protocol.
Mr. Ran, when our firefighters get on the ambulance and go with the AMT personnel to the hospital, is that something that is sometimes really necessary and something that we need to do, given the complexity and maybe the severity of the situation?
I think it's part of the working relationship for 30 years, whether they were paramedics or EMTs or first responders. I mean, even police officers go. In the city, we have our traditions. In the county, Dunlap, Peoria Heights, I mean, it's different. We're generally by ourselves. So in some cases, I think it's extremely beneficial to the care of the patient. It's something that the EMS medical director would expect. In some cases, it's good for training and relationship building. So part of establishing rapport with patients isn't just slamming the door in a firefighter or paramedic's face. And I think we're cognizant of that responsibility to the men and women at Peoria Fire as well.
Do you feel that when it's required, that the situation is that severe that the city should receive some compensation for assisting your company, your private company, in transport?
Well, I knew where you were going with the question. Why don't you just ask that first? So I don't know how to quantify that benefit, okay? Certainly, you can pass a fee that we'd be delighted to pass on to the patients, but to sort of take cuts of fees for what's essentially a fixed cost for you, you know, I think that's a difficult argument. I think there's also some questions as to whether or not there's some quid pro quo contemplated in that arrangement that would make our federal contract lawyers extremely nervous. And I say that publicly, so I acknowledge the fact that that will make our contract lawyers nervous. But if it's a conversation you think we have to have and it's conditioned on some franchise agreement, I think that's something that we don't discuss in public that we should discuss in private. Because there's a lot of ramifications to that.
You know, this is a public matter. And in some cities, of course, it's the city's fire department that runs the ambulances. So I don't think any of this should be secretive. And I think if we're worried about getting the biggest bang for our taxpayer dollar, we should be asking questions like this publicly. There should be no sacred cows. Fire department shouldn't be a sacred cow. AMT shouldn't be a sacred cow. And so, you know, if we're worried about every last cent and we're worried about some redundancy in response, then maybe we ought to be running the calculator when our firefighters have to get onto the ambulance and go to the hospital, or when they get there first. So, you know, I just think right is right and wrong is wrong, and I think there are some things that need to be openly discussed, whether they are politically hot buttons or not. It's time that we have this discussion openly because, really, seriously, I mean, when this whole Fitch thing started, there was some analysis to the effect that we should be cutting half of our firehouses. Of course, that's not your fault.
If there's another question, I'd be happy to answer it. But my perspective on bringing the CEO of a company up to talk about paying you for your firefighters that ride in our trucks without any preparation in advance is the kind of thing that ought to be talked about privately because there are some federal ramifications to that, and it's just not something I'm comfortable discussing in public.
Federal ramifications. Well, I'll have to look into that. Once again, I think we all agree that we have a great ambulance company. Many of our firefighters, I believe, have come into our fire department after first serving with AMT, and I certainly am proud of AMT, and I'm also proud of our Peoria Fire Department. And I think we need to have frank and open discussions about how we're doing things. If Fitch, this study, which, by the way, I did not vote to fund, it's about $75,000 or so, I feel our own internal discussions back and forth could have produced many of these findings with all the experience we have, with all the experience you have, your company. But nevertheless, there were two people who voted no. One councilman who's here tonight was absent tonight that this study was commissioned. So, you know, I think we need to go forward, learn from this, and hopefully, we can work out a better agreement, Mr. Manager, for our people, especially since dollars are short right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm seeing no further lights for discussion, so I would accept a motion to receive and file. Councilman Ruck Regal seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
I don't have any cards up here for citizens to address, but if there's any citizens who would like to address the council, they're welcome to. Okay. I'm seeing none. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Kelly. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. This council meeting is adjourned. We'll be back next Tuesday for regular meeting.